This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board. This program is simulcast on WRFPLP 101.9 FM.
To call to order this regular meeting of the August 6, 2018, Eau Claire School Board, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we in compliance with open meetings law notification?
Yes, we are.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Beeka is absent. Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Harder is also absent. Commissioner Klinkhammer.
Here.
Commissioner Luganbill.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Here.
Commissioner Boob.
Here.
Okay, and we do not have anyone signed up for our public forum today, so that takes us right to the superintendent's report. Dr. Harabat.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I'd like to review the upcoming school board events. So, on August 20th, there will be a Policy and Governance meeting, and that's at 8:45 in the Administration Building, and that will be followed that evening at 5:45 by a tour of the NOC downstairs. And then at 6:15, we'll have a closed session. At 7:00 PM, we'll have our regular school board meeting. So, I will just say that on the 20th, if you are going to go for the tour of the NOC, please RSVP.
What time is the closed session?
The closed session's at 6:15, and the tour is at 5:45. So, the last time that I spoke at a board meeting, I talked about we were waiting to hear about our safety grant, and we did hear last week that we had been awarded the grant of just a little over $388,000. And I just have to say that we are deeply grateful for this safety grant. It promotes the well-being of our students and staff, and I think that's critical to the sense of security and to a supportive learning environment. The grant monies will be used to supplement, but not supplant, planned or allocated funds. So, we can have some enhancements to our security systems, which we will be planning to do. We have signed the paperwork to proceed in ordering equipment and supplies and to schedule training. And so, the team will be meeting next week to discuss the next steps in a timeline for product delivery and installation. The monies are going to be used to update secured entry controlled access video monitoring, surveillance camera replacement additions, a video storage server, to install some additional SafeLatch door hardware, and to train our team in school security assessment training, and also to train our staff in digital threat assessment training. I think these resources are certainly going to help our longstanding partnership that we have with the Eau Claire Police Department and the Sheriff's Office. We have a close working relationship with both of these organizations, and we continue to work together to safeguard our campuses so that everyone can be safe in our schools. So, I just, I think we have, it goes without saying that we appreciate the efforts of Governor Walker, of A.J. Schimmel, our local legislatures, and the DOG Office of School Safety. They did a lot of work to make these grants possible and to get them awarded quickly. So, we're excited, excited to move forward. Then, the next piece of information is something that has kind of been out in the community for a while, but the school district was awarded the recognition of District of Distinction by the National Publication District Administration. A District of Distinction is a national annual recognition program created by the magazine to honor school districts that are leading the way with new ideas that work with innovations. They recognize established initiatives that are yielding benefits and that could be replicated by other districts as well as innovative programs. We submitted an application for our summer school initiative, Removing Barriers for All Learners. And our aim, this is one of our equity initiatives, is to make sure that summer school programs are available to all children in the Eau Claire Area School District, Attendance Area, particularly with children with special needs, English learners, students who might have some socioeconomic needs, and students who are maybe at greater risk of learning losses when school is out for the summer. The summer school program provides lots of opportunities for students to be engaged in high-quality learning. Breakfast, lunch, and transportation are provided for free, as are the courses, which range from athletics and arts to accounting, journalism, dental assistance, music lessons, residential construction. Currently, there are about 6,000 students enrolled, which is equal to a little over 40% of the district's population. And we have more than 25 community partners participating with us. So, we try to offer something for everyone. And we have a little video to show you that the Communication Committee has been working on about our summer school program.
The weather is warm, the sunshine is out, and there's excitement in the air. For our families, the Eau Claire Area School District is a summertime destination for educational, physical, and inspiring activities.
We're just really grateful to all of our partners who have stepped up and kind of joined us in this brand idea.
I see that the volume was ready earlier.
Whether it's for students in elementary, middle, or high school, we have opportunities available that keep students engaged. So, how does it all work?
Our partners are sponsored by the district, so they do this in partnership with us to make it happen. But the diversity of offerings that they can bring to the table for students is something that the district can be simply not give them at all.
The Eau Claire Area School District partners with nearly two dozen organizations, including the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Eau Claire City Parks and Recreation Department, to provide hundreds of programs for our students all over the city.
Every single child is mutual and I get a chance to tell them all. Maybe have it at the end of the meeting? Okay, all right, thank you. Well, that's it for right now.
Thank you. That takes us to my president's report, and it's very brief. First, I just want to say congratulations to all of our staff on the really great accomplishment of being featured nationally by District Administration. That's, I think, a testament to all of our great work as a district, particularly the work that's been centered on student equity. So, that's wonderful. I also want to remind board members to check out our shared board Google Doc with outreach opportunities. If you do not have this easily available or have not had it shared with you lately, I would be happy to reshare it with you or Patty. There are some pretty good upcoming opportunities, including visits to classes, programs, and representing the board at events. So, that's all I have for the board president's report, and that takes us to committee reports. Does the Budget Committee have an update? Has not, not since last time?
Nope, not since last time.
Okay, and we'll have at the August 20th meeting, some discussion about budget, I know. Demographic trends, no update there. Shared services, no update there. Is there a LEAP update?
No update there.
Okay, and Policy and Governance met this morning, and we worked through a couple of different policies that we've approved, drafts of, and one you'll see on the agenda tonight, which is the social media. And then, at our meeting on the 20th, we'll have two policies, one regarding student voter registration, one regarding threats. So, look for those as well. And legislative update, Commissioner Torres.
Nothing concrete, but I would like to share that the State Superintendent has announced that the Department of Public Instruction 2019-21 State Budget Request will incorporate elements from the Fair Funding for Our Future Plan, which was proposed in previous budgets, hopefully with better luck this time. According to the DPI, this includes warranting state funding for every student and accounting for family income and poverty as a factor in education, in educating students. That's it.
Thank you. And that takes us right along to our consent resolution agenda, so we can approve all of these, but if you would like to pull one item, please let me know. So, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the board meeting on July 23, 2018, the minutes of closed session, July 23, 2018, the Human Resources and Employment Report. And I believe that's...
It?
Okay. So, approving 6.2 through 6.4. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
And because this doesn't have finance-related, I believe we can just do a voice vote. So, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Okay, thank you. And that takes us to our individually considered resolutions, and our first, 7.1, is the Spanish Dual Immersion Program Proposal for Professional Development and Curriculum Writing. Welcome.
All right, thank you, Patty. All right, good evening. Ms. Smith and I are here to provide an update on the work that has been ongoing on the proposed Spanish Dual Immersion Program for the Eau Claire Area School District. Remember, we reported, oh, gosh, back in the spring, we gave an update on the current work. The board had asked us some questions, so we're here to update tonight on those questions, things like the curriculum matriculation, what lotteries might look like, and codifying some of the funding, potential funds that would need to be dedicated for the program. So, that's what we're here to do this evening. And that is not our PowerPoint. I think so. I wrote DOS a long time ago, but that was about 1985, so I don't think that's the case.
That's not closing. Can I just hide it?
Well, once upon a time, I was a high school government teacher, so I can talk ad nauseam with aids or not, if you would like that. But one of the things that we talk about tonight is, as James is helping us here, is just the alignment to the strategic plan. There's lots of different initiatives and things that we talk about within the district. I'm confident that this proposal really does touch on all the core areas of the strategic plan for the district. We talk about academic achievement. We presented in a previous time in front of the board that students that go through a dual immersion program meet or exceed achievement once they've been immersed in the program. Remember, the idea that it takes two years for students to be fully actionalized, and then you see rapid growth on testing scores. Of course, it gives that dualism in language as they move through the program, which is, you know, in any, I would argue, an incalculable value to produce a student that is bilingual. Certainly touching social-emotional growth opportunities for students, builds a collaborative culture. For example, some of the work that we've done with our community partners, including El Centro, really helping inform the work that we've done thus far. Partnerships with UW Eau Claire and our friends at CBTC as well have helped guide the advisory team. Certainly, both acquiring high-quality staff and equally, probably more importantly, developing the high-quality staff that we have here in our district to empower the dual immersion program, that relationship building that our staff does with students every day, and then would do it through this program too, as students would move through a program of dual immersion with a dedicated group of staff members, you know, building that relationship, and then, of course, that partnership with family and communities. And remember, one of the charges with a dual immersion program, having that housed at one building, would be the building and the staff really doing outreach to parents who may be coming from throughout the district in order to build that community culture, that neighborhood culture for a family and for students that maybe don't live in that neighborhood, right? And that, so when you actively engage in that action of doing so, you further, hopefully, build that partnership and that relationship with families. Just a reminder of the proposed planning implementation timeline that the board has affirmed thus far, 1718, recently concluded 1718, planning year. Now, here we are at the cusp of 2018-19, and tonight we'll ask if the board would empower Brianna and I to move forward on the professional development and the beginning, the curricular underpinnings of the program, with the idea that in 1920 would be our first cohort, a kindergarten cohort, and then you can see as we would move forward in the progressing years, each year adding another band until we are up to a K5 program in '24, '25. So, that's the overarching goal that the board has seen before, and tonight, before we can get to '24, '25, we've got to talk about next steps for 1819. And Brianna will talk about resource allocation and year one planning.
So, something that the board requested during our last presentation was, up to this point, what resources have been allocated to get us where we are so far. So, we went back, actually, year one would have been two years ago, and it's when we did our site visit over to Appleton and Manasha, which we've referenced in previous presentations. And how I split these up is I kind of described the purpose of the activity or the resource, and then if there was any money allocated to that activity. And I also put time on there, because a lot of these require time commitments, but not necessarily like a monetary commitment. So, the first year, we just had a sub for a teacher who joined us over on that visit, and then food and travel cost. This last year, most of our activities revolved around us doing a lot of new learning and then meeting with different groups. So, a lot of research and new learning happened on my part, so you can see on there, there's no additional costs, but about four hours a week for 30 weeks of just new learning and reading up on research. We had the committee, the Dual Immersion Committee. We met four times, and each of those meetings was anywhere from an hour to two hours. We did have a sub cost in that one, as we had a teacher on the committee, so she needed a sub. We held four listening sessions, and those took about an hour to three hours, depending on which listening session was some of them more longer than others. And then, Dave and I also throughout this whole process have had bi-weekly meetings to kind of discuss where we are at, what we needed to do moving forward, and that was about an hour a meeting about every other week, so about 15 meetings. So, you can see there, that's kind of where we're at so far with resources allocated. A lot of it was time, not a lot of dollars were spent so far with this proposed program moving forward. So, what we're asking for tonight is approval for curriculum and professional development funding. So, as a reminder, when we talk about curriculum, we are going to have new curriculum in terms of ELA. Students are going to be learning how to read, write, speak, and listen in a different language, whether it's Spanish speakers learning English or English speakers learning Spanish. So, that would be a new curriculum for our district, so there will be some curriculum writing that would go into that as well, and then we would need to find some new resources to align to that new curriculum. A lot of professional development for the teachers in the program and also BEAs around instructional strategies and the three pillars of a bilingual program. And then, we also don't want to forget that the professional development for the administrators, because they will be the ones evaluating and supervising the teachers in this program, and then also making sure that the program is held to fidelity. So, there will be professional development that we'll need to provide for administrators as well. So, here you can see there's the professional development or curriculum activity on the far left, and then moving over, there's a description of what it is, the cost, and then what fund that will be coming from. So, the first one is kind of, it would be an introduction to the professional development for the team, and it's around the three pillars of dual, dual-language education, and it revolves around looking at other successful programs. This is an online professional development that we would do as a group, and it's about $1,000, and that would come through Title II. There's also the Carla Institute, which I've referenced many times, and that's over in the Twin Cities, and that's, like, you want to register in January when it opens. You get people from all over the United States that come to this when they're starting their dual immersion programs. It's a five-day training for our teachers, and then a three-day training for the administrators. And this really focuses on program goals, models, benefits, and challenges. And then also, teachers will receive focused curriculum development and hear from a mentor-teacher panel as well. The approximate cost of that is $7,650. Note on that, and I'll talk about that later, that's in July, so that actually will not come from this next year's budget, because it's of July, so it actually, I have it broken down to this the next two years. And that, again, comes from Title II. And as I mentioned before, there'll be some curriculum writing that needs to happen as well. So, this would be district teachers with a bilingual licensure will work to create the new curriculum, like I talked about, that we would deliver in Spanish, and also help us select resources to align to those. And the approximate cost of that would be $6,000, and that will actually be split up over the two years. Expecting if we started moving forward with this, you'd obviously have to have some staffing worked out, so really, this would start the spring of this year, and then over the summer, and then obviously for adding a first grade through the whole next year as well. So, that, the $6,000 is going to be split up between two different years, and that comes from Title II, and then we can also pull 8% of that from our bilingual-bicultural grant as well. So, here it is broken down, our total estimated cost between the next two years. So, this next year, we're asking for $4,000, a bulk of it coming from Title II, and then a little bit of it we can pull from the bilingual-bicultural grant. And then, the following year, in 2019, 2020, we're asking for $10,650. Again, a majority of that coming from the Title II grant, and then we can get a little bit of reimbursement through our bilingual-bicultural grant as well to help support the professional So, I'm going to move on. This next part is, I can't remember who had the question, but somebody wanted some sample applications or how other districts did their application process and how they ran their lotteries. So, I pulled, I researched on three different districts in the state. So, the first district I looked at was, is Madison's Metropolitan School District. They have a huge dual immersion program, various languages, but I focused on their Spanish dual immersion program, because that's what we're looking at. So, how it works is their dual-language immersion program is open to all their students within their district boundaries, but it's only available at certain elementary schools and at specific grade levels, depending on the elementary school. So, students living outside the attendance area of those schools can apply, but in Madison, students living within the attendance area are given preference to the program in their district. They do have a note on there, though, that they do stick to the model, remember I talked about, for this to be a successful program, you want to have your classroom dynamic be split between native English speakers and native Spanish speakers. So, they do have a note in their lottery process that the classrooms are billed at a 50-50 or to a 60-40 ratio based on language background. So, they do have their lottery structured to meet the need to keep that classroom ratio to match what they would like their program to look like as well. And then I did look, just because I was curious, so they have 10 schools. Madison has a total of 32 elementary schools, and 10 of them are Spanish dual immersion schools. And I said they are kind of split between grades. Five of their schools are K5 programs, like the one we are proposing, and then a couple of them are just lower elementary of a K2 program as well. And they do have programs that move into their middle school and high school as well. They do have application deadlines, which is consistent with all the districts I looked at, fairly common. Application deadlines would be earlier if you had a program like this. Applications open in January and Madison's closed in April, and they notify families in May of if they got chosen through the lottery. And then they also have a sibling disclaimer in their lottery where once, if a sibling of a child in the program, they get automatic entrance into the program, so families can stay within the same school, and they don't have children at various schools. The next one is Manasha, and this was a site that we actually visited. So, their timeline for enrollment was a little bit later, but they are quite a bit smaller of a district than Madison, so I have a feeling they can, don't have as many students entered in their lottery as well. But they have a parent night before they actually have their enrollment open, so they have families attend a parent, a parent night, and then they actually have them go through the application and enrollment process. And then, if they're chosen via the lottery, they actually have parents return a parent commitment form to their dual immersion program. And then you can see below kind of how their lottery system works is, it's for incoming district kindergarten students who have siblings enrolled in the program are first in their lottery, and then incoming Manasha district kindergarten students who do not have siblings in the program, and then they open it up to students from outside the Manasha School District, and then who have siblings in the program, and then the last one is new students to the district outside of the Manasha School District. And they also, if you're curious about, Manasha has five elementary schools, and they have one full K5 program. And their program actually is, when we were there, it was a two-per-grade level, so two grades at each grade level, K5, up and running. And then, Verona Area School District was the other one I looked at, and actually have a really robust bilingual program in their district, which I wasn't aware of. So, they, TUI is another acronym you'll see a lot, it just means two-way immersion. It's used kind of synonymously with a dual immersion program. But they have, one of their first notes they have is that they will stick to the approximate of 50% Spanish-speaking homes and 50% students from English-speaking homes. So, again, they have that right, right out there, so everyone knows when they apply for this program that they are going to stick to keeping their classroom dynamic at that 50%, try to stick to 50% on each side. Theirs is open up to families from all attendance areas in the district can request placement into the program. However, their program is only at two of their schools, so students in those attendance area have preferential placement in their district. And their timeline is January through February to be considered for their lottery. And then they also provide students, for all students who are entered into their program per board policy, in Verona. And Verona has a total of four elementary schools, and they have two Spanish dual immersion programs. All right, and then...
So, some questions regarding the lottery that were generated both from our last conversation with the board and some of the questions that we generated, you know, exploring what the three models are that we're looking at. It appears that two lotteries is something that you see most common, one for the native speakers, as Brianna referred to, and then one for the non-native speakers to keep that 50-50, 60-40 balance that seems to be supported by evidence-based practices of the most successful dual immersion programs. This makeup is essential, then, for that design of the program. Priority to siblings, once a lottery is established, is an option that the lottery rules could structure, if that is the direction that we would choose to go. That would certainly enable to keep families in the same school, and that would be, that would align to current district practices in other, other areas where enrollment or population of the school is at question. The use of weighted lotteries for underrepresented students and district, regarding their district enrollment, has been shown to be an allowable practice, so weighted lotteries is something that appears to be allowable. Weighted lotteries are typically determined by either board policy, or the board would designate that to be administrative rule. And we understand that, at this point, that that's an allowable practice for the district to engage in if you choose to go down the lottery route. So... So, um, as we talked about here, the, um, total estimated professional development and curriculum costs, as Brianna talked about earlier, would be a $4,000 commitment right now, mostly funded out of Title II grants, some bilingual bicultural grant for that next step of both, um, so curriculum writing and, um, professional development that wraps around, um, supporting that, um, entry into building what the curricular platform would look like. And then you can see the costs for 1920 that would be incurred in that area as well to continue to flesh out both professional development and curriculum costs. So, um, the Dual Immersion Committee will need board direction to continue building the scope of the Dual Immersion Program. To move forward, the committee is requesting the board to approve professional development and curriculum costs, as we've talked about tonight. And then the next steps, unless the board, um, directs, um, differently, that we would come back in December and then talk about the application, look for approval of the app, application process. Perhaps there's some, uh, work that needs to be done between now and then. And then, um, in March, at least as of today, in August, we would look at, March being a date to talk about transportation and what that would look like and the costs that are being incurred with that. So that is, uh, the next steps if, uh, the board directs us to go forward tonight. So that's a lot. Questions?
Commissioner Humboldt Boyle.
So I, I have quite a few questions, I think, because I'm going to try to put it in the big picture of the budget and kind of where we're sitting and having those conversations as well. So tell me a little bit more about Title II and, um, the bilingual bicultural grants and if the money is used from those grants. I would imagine it's being all used now, so what will not happen when that money is used for the Spanish immersion?
Um, the, I can speak to the bilingual bicultural grant. Actually, the application for, which is why we're hoping it doesn't get pushed back, is due August 15th for this next school year, actually. So if approved, that would be put into the grant for this next year, so that money would be earmarked. Um, in the bilingual bicultural grant that's applied for, um, and due August 15th of every year, um, that is a grant where we get a certain percent back every year. So I would enter, for like, that's the Carla Institute, I would enter the total 7,000, whatever, 7,600, and then we get a percent back on that every year. It's averaged around 8%. So that's how the bilingual bicultural grant works. It depends on what the big pool of money is, and then they disperse a percent based off of that. So I do enter the, the whole cost of whatever I'm putting in there, and then we get a percent back.
Can I have a follow-up question? So what would the impact be on our budget? If, in fact, I mean, if we write for grants, we're not guaranteed that, are we? Is it a guaranteed grant?
Abby, you want to touch on the bilingual bicultural grant?
Sure. The bilingual bicultural grant kind of works like the special ed reimbursement that we get, Chris, and I know you're very familiar with that. So kind of to, um, piggyback on what Ms. Smith is saying is that she will put in, here's all of our eligible costs, and then it's a, it's like a categorical aid that comes back. We submit a report once a year in mid-August, end of August, of all of our eligible expenses, and then it comes back in categorical aid.
So we would get an 8% reimbursement?
Correct.
And the rest would come out of our general budget?
Correct.
Okay.
For, for this case, it would be Title II. Yeah, we, that's ours. These two are split between two grants. So we're not, um, we're not pulling anything from district budget. All our professional development is coming from Title II or bilingual bicultural grants.
I guess that's my question, too, is how much is in Title II? And is that written for every year? Is that, I mean, we've talked a little about, about the different places that money are placed. What does that look like exactly?
So Title II, um, is mainly used for professional development, and that professional development looks different each year based upon the allocation that we receive from DPI and any unspent funds that were out there from last year. There's always carryforward that's allocated. And so, um, I know that, uh, the academic services team works really diligently to determine, here's how we're going to spend our Title II funds. And so to clarify what, um, you just said is that, um, Ms. Smith would put in, here's what the cost was, and then we get that 8% back. So she would put in the amount to get us the 8% back, and the rest would be 100% reimbursed by the grant as well. So, um, in the proposal, there isn't any additional district funds being spent. It's just that they would have to tailor the PD from the Title II and to what's their plan for that upcoming year. And that plan changes every year.
It does. And the academic services team, when we met this last year to talk about, you know, layout, what are we going to focus our professional development on, there is an earmark in there with Carla Institute, um, coming up. So the academic services team is aware that this is something that, if moving forward, it is kind of earmarked in Title II, so the team is aware of that training.
I think, I mean, I'm all for, I think this is a wonderful thing. I just want to make sure we have our bases covered.
Sure. The construct of Title II is we built, we, we, we've built our professional development to occupy all the Title II dollars. There is some carryforward, as Abby said, but we, um, we, we build the professional development with the general idea of what the Title II dollars can support.
I have one more question, then. So if I look at the big picture for the district, um, you know, we've got other things that are kind of out there hanging with LEAP and with some of the things that have to do with, uh, professional development with that. And we're, we're going to be working on that policy and what that looks like. So I guess, um, in looking at the big picture, um, we, in Title II, will there be some options for some flexibility within Title II and professional, professional development if that comes up in the future, given our vote on this tonight? Because I know everything affects the budget, and I, I'm just, I'm just wondering where that sits as well. And I know this is a, a proposal coming from within the district. We have that proposal coming from outside the district. We have some other things that are going with LEAP that have not, we haven't really talked budget for that yet. So I just wanted to kind of lay that out on the table as well, as a board, to see if, um, do we, do we need all of our pieces in front of us relative to, to what's happening in our district with innovation or ideas about nature-based learning, all that kind of stuff as we make these decisions? Do we need those all in front of us as we prioritize or focus? I'm not quite sure. I just wanted to bring it up.
Well, um, I guess, uh, what I would say probably to, to what Commissioner Humboldt Boyle is talking about is I think one of the benefits of how we've been approaching this program is it's been one step at a time and kind of small phases. And I think that as we talk about the LEAP policy, I believe in September we're looking to do that, but as we talk about LEAP proposals or any other proposals, following a similar model, that not, we're not going to try to approve a whole huge thing at once, but that we're going to try in phases and steps, you know? So I, I would be hopeful that if we, if we were to, you know, adopt that kind of way of, that hasn't been how we've approached these in the past, but I think that, uh, in the future, if we did that, it would be helpful. The, um, my question is the piece about the application process and transportation. You really need to have the application process figured out because we might adopt a more progressive stance on providing services regarding transportation, and then you'd have to figure it out. And is that correct?
I think the, um, purpose of doing application first, because if the board approved that, we'd obviously open up an application, and then we would know where the students are coming from, and we could kind of estimate transportation costs moving forward. Um, that, that was, if you remember, that was a number that was really hard to pinpoint a number because we didn't know who was going to be in the program. So that's why we kind of split those up into those two separate phases.
Yeah. Okay. Um, do other, do other board members have questions, comments? Commissioner Torres?
I think that, uh, thank you for the details that you shared with us tonight. I think that the effort, uh, that has been invested, uh, through all the people involved in the process is, um, cannot be, you know, you cannot put a, a price dollar on that. That's already a huge investment. And what they are requesting is a small investment that we can, uh, provide to further these projects that will, um, produce, I am sure, very good results. I support the request.
Are there any other? Commissioner Wu, did you have something?
Yeah, I have something. I'm a lot more like what Commissioner Humboldt Boye mentioned earlier. It looks like we may have to look at the bigger picture in making decision or else we might be committing some decision now, which is quite small, but it may be a situation where financial reason, uh, constraint might, might limit the path two, three years from now. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is the amount of dollar being requested tonight and the timeframes are important and is doable, but looking at the bigger question priority for the district, uh, there, for example, need assessment, they're strongly pointing out the direction that we are moving. Is this the need of the district for sure? Is this the top priority? I, I'm just saying that we are seeing things in quite separate wa, separately. They're not necessarily a, a big item that is, um, it's being considered as a package. In other words, budget committee, have they looked into three years, five years in terms of financial implication, what the district can support and cannot support? I, I don't know. I don't have that clear, um, information.
Commissioner Humboldt Boyle.
I, I reiterate that as well. I mean, I think this is great. I think the other ideas are great, but I think we, we really, as a board, have to sit down with all these pieces and really look at how they all fit together as to what this is going to look like as we go through the next two to three years, four or five years. Uh, we have a new biennial budget coming up here. I'm very hopeful, um, which I, I think some changes will be made, but I, I, I feel like I am looking at this in somewhat isolation as well tonight and say, I mean, and I would, I would be very much in favor of this, but I sit in budget development and know that everything impacts the other. I think it'd be a great conversation for us as a district to really put these pieces down and vision them ahead and what the cost would be and what it would look like across the district.
Can I say one thing? Um, just how we broke it up, um, so what we're asking for tonight is really your approval on us to continue our new learning and professional development for staff. It's not a commitment to the program because it, it could be where we get into this new learning and find out maybe it's not a great fit for our district, but we're not going to know that until we continue to do this learning, and that will kind of help guide us in that as, as well. And then we could provide, because we did, um, in one of our first couple presentations, broke down the cost, how much it would cost go, to go through K-5 and how much it would cost each year to add a grade level. So we do have those numbers that if budget committee wanted to look long-term, how much this program would cost. But knowing tonight, we're really asking for you to help, help us move forward with continuing to learn more about what this program would look like in the Oakley School District, really from experts in the field, which we haven't had the opportunity to do. It's been a lot of just reading and research. We haven't had, like, the gurus of the field to really tell us in, in person what it would be like.
Is there money in the budget if this would come up with other groups that would like to do this as well this year? Or has the, has Title II been already prioritized out?
I'm going to look at you because you have the detail behind Title II more than I do.
So if there was, if it were, there was a group that was interested in a program that had some similarities, we would absolutely want, with the board's direction, executive team's direction, of course, we would work to support that, um, that exploration financially or budgetarily, we would scaffold the way that we have with this program. So initially, we had very little cost, right? We, um, there was the cost of bringing a committee together, using an advisory and structure in that way. So you would certainly have to be purposeful, and we do try to do things in a zero-based manner, right? So there are times you incur greater costs because you're exploring a new initiative. If there was another initiative brought to Brianna and I to explore, we would do so. We'd try to follow the same manner that I think so far the board's supported the, the process that we've gone down. Good question.
Commissioner Clint Cameron?
Thank you. Um, it's, just so I understand, the, the Title II funds, the grant there, those are limited to professional development, is that correct? And professional development means current teachers. It's not any type of outside program. So, so the, so the money that we would be approving here would either go for this program or some other type of professional development program for staff within the district.
Um, later tonight, we'll actually talk about some of the ESA rules, and ESA talks about Title II, where it says the allocation is for developing high-quality staff and professional development of your, your instructional staff, and those people that support the instructional staff. So it's people currently under employment, if that's your question.
Thank you.
And the bilingual bicultural is if a teacher has the bilingual licensure, then we can count their professional development towards that grant as well. It's a licensure with that grant.
Thank you. I don't see any other lights. So the board, uh, because this is an individually considered item tonight, the board will need to make a motion. The board, uh, the recommended motion from administration is to approve the program proposal for professional development and curriculum writing plan, um, but another motion can be made. So, uh, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Oh, I would just say, as you deliberate, um, you know, we had quite a few discussions, uh, with the board about innovation and also about equity. I think as we have gone down the pathway of looking at new programs and new innovations, we have found that a deliberate approach is probably, um, is something that the district needs, uh, to take things slowly, to do the research, to do, as Brianna said, the learning that's needed in order to move a program forward. You can't just jump into a program like this within a year. There has to be some planning, some learning, um, in order to even know whether or not you're going to go forward with the program. So, um, in, in listening to the, to the board's discussion in, uh, budget development and also when we've had discussion of programs, uh, that might be innovative or might be different, uh, we've talked about, okay, how do we get these things going? And I think one of the ways that we get that going is by taking baby steps and learning what we need to do and what we need to know before we make the next, the next decision. In any innovation, um, there is going to be some cost associated with the learning. We are able to underwrite that cost with our Title II professional development. At this stage of the game, we would probably take this approach with any new innovation that we would talk about. Because you do have to take a very deliberate and kind of studied approach before you take a full-scale implementation. So I just ask the board to consider that as well.
Okay, thank you.
I still have one more question. This is for all the board members. Along with other initiative, this initiative that we are about to vote, has it been a, um, priority born out of our strategic plan? Or is it because it's aligned with the stra, strategic plan? If it is born out of the district action plan, then I think we have to, have no choice but, um, go along with it, and I would go along with full force. But I don't want to see situation where initiative is, um, is initiate not as an action of the strategic plan. And I don't remember, as a board, we have, um, we have deep conversations- And I don't remember as a board, we have, um, we have deep conversation after our work sessions on how to interpret action plan that were identified through strategic plan. And the reason I ask this is because, yes, it all involve money, but money has to be purposefully that relate to or driven by the strategic plan. Not so much relate, but driven by the priority that identified through the strategic plan. The one reason why we have goals and strategic plans so that, that we can argue how we spend money. Otherwise, everything that come to us are, are important, but, but what's important and what's urgent is what I am hoping that we, we be able to distinguish. Not just do things that is urgent, but do things that are important and also, um, planned things and not just because it's important. So I, I don't know. I, I hate to kill the program by not approving tonight's request, knowing that tonight's request is for gathering information and developing the program so that it's more concrete to present to the board, but at the same time, we bent to that path before. And how much are we going to repeat the same thing? I'm torn.
Well, um, I, I would suggest a board member make, make a motion and then we can discuss whatever that motion would look like. So the, um, you know, if someone wants to make a motion that we approve the professional development and curriculum writing plan.
I move to approve the professional development and curriculum August 2018 as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So now we can discuss. So we have the, we have this approval before us. The, I do appreciate that the funds are coming from Title II as well as the other, the other grant. When I think about, as a district, we talk a lot about equity. We talk a lot about the achievement gap with our black and brown students. And I think that we, when, when I think about innovation, when I think about things that, that we could implement or, or create in our school district, I would, I would really love for our priority right now to be programs that are going to lift up, encourage, support our most marginalized students in some fashion. And, and I think this is one of those programs that would, would achieve that. I do also, I, so for tonight, I would, I will be personally voting to approve the professional development and curriculum writing piece because I feel like I, I want us as a board to be able to vote on this proposal as a proposal and not as a half-baked thing. I want to, I want to give our staff the, the ability to look at this seriously. And I also want doing this, I want us to set a precedent as a board that we support programs in this way, in their development, that we support that investment and that isn't just for this, that should be for other programs as well. But I think that we as a board need to establish that, that culture. So for that reason, I will, I'll vote in favor tonight. Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
Joe, I couldn't agree with you more. I, I, you know, if I reflect back on things that have been brought before us, I, I thought they were in smaller steps, but I, I think that the policy, and I'm speaking of LEAP, could have been refined more and I think that's what we, we didn't have, okay? I want to send a message though that, you know, this is just another step on us getting more information. I mean, Brianna, your, your input was very valuable in what you had to say. And that we, um, we as a board start looking at this more ahead. As Charles was saying, driven by the strategic plan, not just come before the board and we, we okay it, that we, we have our work sessions as we're planning to do, to really plan out what this is going to look like and what our district's going to look like down the road and what, how that will affect our budget down the road as well. I think that's a good step in the discussion to get us there. So, thank you.
Commissioner Vu.
I agree with what you said earlier, that we have moved forward to approve as a proposal to study. I agree with that, but I also like to add that if I were to vote to go ahead with this, it also mean that the district administrators identify this and others priority so that we know what's on the table in the next three years, if not five. I don't want to keep voting on things, either supporting it or stopping it. We stopped things before. I just want to see more commitment from administrator about what kind of initiative that will come on the table for voting. If this is one that the district fully support and this is what is in their action plan, I, I'm behind it, but I want to see bigger picture.
Commissioner Torres.
I'll just add to the comments that not only the, the project according to how it has been presented to us is aligned to the strategic plan as explained in the first slide here tonight and in the prior two presentations of, of, of the project, but the way that it has been put together has shown a sort of organic movement because not only administrators were involved, but also teachers and members of the community in ways that were very positive and enriching. And it has, you know, completed a mature, a time to mature so that it can be brought to us as, you know, a solid project as, as it is. So I think your concerns are, um, you don't need to be concerned, that's what I was going to say.
Are there any other questions, comments? Oh, Commissioner Hamburg Boyle.
I, I think everybody had much to say in support and I want you to know who hardly I support as well. I just want to remind us that as a board, we have to put this in the big picture and we have to prioritize. We're making a lot of non-choices now with our budget where we need both. So I know some things that are out there on the horizon that people would like our district to do and they're going to come before us with just as much research and just, and some have, and some have had very good community support and staff support. And when they come back to the board, I want to know where that fits as well with the district so that we aren't okaying, as Charles said, individual things, but we're looking at what this looks like as a whole. And I think that helps us make decisions, knowing all the parts, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments, questions? Okay. Seeing none, there is a motion on the floor made by Commissioner Torres and seconded by Commissioner Klinkhammer to approve the professional development and curriculum writing plan. So I will call for a roll call vote on that.
Commissioner Luganville?
Yes.
Commissioner Torres?
Yes.
Commissioner Vu?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamburg Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes.
Thank you. Very good thoughtful discussion, so. Now we'll move to 7.2, which is the form. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. We'll move to 7.2, which is regarding the formation of Equity Committee to Review Graduation Parties. And I know Dr. Hardbeck had asked to place this on the agenda, so perhaps you'd like to just explain what this is.
Yes. I've had a, a parent that came to see me to ask questions about arrangements for graduation parties and I think that the parent was speaking on behalf of a larger group of parents. And there were questions about how donations are used, everything from monetary donations to food donations, to the size of the schools and how the donations are divided among the schools, whether the money should follow the student and there should be a certain amount of money allocated for each student or whether there should be a division equally among the two high schools. So a lot of questions. I think a lot of the practices have evolved over time and been built out of traditions and I think there's a desire now, perhaps from both high schools, to have some more clear-cut expectations of how things will operate. So this sounded very much to me like the kind of questions we got about the donations to the two high schools and so I thought it might be a good topic for one of our equity committees.
So we would just need a motion tonight to form this committee and then administration would work on putting out an application for parents to join and others. And we do also have one other Equity Committee that's currently in the works and that's this coming month that will start meeting, September, regarding facility access. So we'll have two working. But would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to initiate an Equity Committee to Review Graduation Parties.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And we can just do a voice vote on this one. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Okay. Easy enough. That takes us, we'll adjourn now to committee and our first report tonight is regarding the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESA review. Who is presenting that? Okay. Who's doing the family climate survey? Let's do that.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Ragkin. I'm the Director of Assessment and I'm here to present on the Family Climate Survey. Tonight, we're going to look at the Family Climate Survey results and what we have, I'll take you a little back in time and what we have done with the Family Climate Survey in the past, what our result is telling us right now and our action items for the future. The Family Climate Survey, we've been doing this survey for approx, four or five years and this survey is a census survey. And so we send emails out to our families, hoping that they will respond back to those emails. Our response rate for this year's survey was 20%. We had 1,848 responses and we did some, we used some strategies this year that we have not used in the past, hoping to increase our participation rate. One of the things that we did is we opened up the survey a lot earlier so that we could offer the survey during parent-teacher conferences. And so what we did is we put a kiosk in all of the schools and had an attendant at those kiosks to offer some assistance to help them fill out that survey. We had some responses, but not the increase that we were hoping. Another thing though, the pro of our survey this year is that we had the most responses that we ever have had with Hmong and Spanish translations. And so that, we saw a big uptick with that. So that was a, a big benefit. So I'm a big why person and so the very first question that we have is why do we measure family climate? Research shows that when families are engaged, it promotes school readiness, social, emotional growth, positive attitudes towards school and academic success. We know that in order for family engagement to be successful, that it has to center on culturally responsive and sustained relationships between family and school staff and a shared responsibility of a child's well-being. Another reason that we are having the Family Climate Survey is we are required through ESA and TIDAL to have family engagement strategies put in place. We have to be, be able to define strategies to support successful school and family interactions. We also have to ensure effective involvement of families and support a partnership with those school, families and community to improve the academic achievement. One of the things that we have done to help support this is, and I forgot it back, maybe it did. Yeah, it did. Forgot it back there. But one of the things that we did is we are working on, over the past six months, we have been working on our multi-level systems of support. We brought this to you in June, we showed it to you. And some of the things, the foundational things that we have put onto that MLSS is family and community partnerships. And then in each tier, we have family engagement. And how does that look different as a student moves through our universal instruction into our tier two and our tier three and tiers? So, and then the third reason why we measure family climate is to have a feedback loop. We want to provide those feedback loops for parents and families that they can give us feedback in a confidential manner. Going to take you to the past and so what actions have we taken? The, what you see in bold are responses that we have seen in family engagement surveys in the past and what is not bold are actions that we have taken. So families, they responded that they want innovative opportunities for their child. LEAP was developed. Families want more rigorous and challenging curriculum at all levels. School improvement plans have been revised to promote growth and continuous improvement for every student. School facility use was the lowest rated service in the survey. The Budget Development Committee reviewed the building rental policies and worked with community nonprofit groups to improve service and access. Families want more supervision of instructional staff. Educator effectiveness was implemented to improve the quality of professional development and the supervision of principals and teachers. Families want breaks in the school year and to finish the school year in early June, a new calendar was created with more professional development days. Families want to give more feedback about the experience of schools rather than the district as a whole. Families no longer, they don't have to take it as a district, they can take it for each and every student, um, school that they have a child in. So they can, if they have three children, they're able to take that survey three times and give three different responses. And then the last one, families want more students, or want more students have access to summer school opportunities. We have really worked on breaking down the barriers by partnering with community partners and provide more and different opportunities and providing busing. So transportation is not a barrier. Now, our current survey, what did it tell us? So the overall perception of educational quality was 85%. 85% of our respondents gave us an A or a B for our educational quality. This was a slight increase from last year. Last year, we were at 83%. And what you can see is that we are above the community Springstead and the National Gallup poll. So our survey is broken up into our strategic priority areas and so we're going to look at each of the priority areas. And so if you look at here, this is giving you the percentage of respondents that responded to strongly agree or agree on the questions. So it's a Likert scale. Our goal as a district, we have a goal of 80% of the respondents answering either strongly agree or agree. In all three of these areas, academic support, rigorous and challenging programs, educational programs and services, we have scored above our goal, but we still have improvements to make if we dig deeper into that data. So in the next couple of days, principals will be collaborating around this data and other data and having conversations around the organizational structures that need to be in place and the strategies that we can use to successfully meet students' needs in all three of these categories as a district and at each of our specific schools. We move into the strategic priority area, student social and emotional growth. As we look at this, we have met our 80% goal in student support, school operations, bus transportation, and educating the whole child. An area that K-12 has identified as an area of growth is safety and behavior. When we dig deeper into this area, we have found that some of the concerns revolve around confidential information, such as how staff have addressed bullying concerns. The feedback we, that we have received, we will be analyzing, and we will be looking for strategies in which we can communicate safety and behavior concerns in an effective manner to students, to staff, to families, while having, while being confidential when needed. So collaborative structures is our third strategic priority area. We do not ask any questions about collaborative cultures on the survey itself, but this really is collaboration with our families. And so we use the family climate survey as one strategy of how we can get feedback from parents and families. And so then we take that data, we analyze that data, we look for strategies of what can we do next. Other, other ways that we do this, we do this through PAC, we do this through PTO, advisory committees are some, some of other examples. High-quality staff has been identified by K-12 Insight as an area of growth. K-12, as they analyze this, they have communicated that the areas in here, the school leadership and the accountability are below our 80% goal, and that really, it has come through that it is about our consistent practices. Us being consistent, teacher-to-teacher, grade level-to-grade level, principal-to-principal, school-to-school. So we are working on creating consistent practices in these areas with the implementation of our multi-level systems of support framework. This implementation is going to be delivered with consistent professional development, and we are creating a SharePoint site that will have consistent resources for all. A highlight of the framework is our guaranteed and viable curriculum, in which all subject areas will provide consistent curriculum for teachers to deliver. We are also creating a consistent school improvement plan, which we showed you in June, template that focuses on developing a solid foundation, which includes our organizational structures, our strong shared leadership, our positive culture, and our family and community engagement. As we move into our last strategic priority, our partnerships with families and community, we have met our goal of 80% with communication with the principal. K-12 has identified family engagement as an area of growth. When digging deeper into this data, families, just like in the past, are concerned with our facilities use. They would like to have more access to our facilities, but we continue to have more demands in this area and not all the resources needed. We have made revisions to our facility use policy in the past. We have opened the libraries and computer labs during our summertime, and we continue, and we'll, we have and will continue to review and revise this facility use policy. Another question that we ask is, how do parents want, or families want to be communicated with? So your first column looks at how families currently get information about their school, and then how families want to get information about their school. If you look, we pretty much nailed it with our email, is they, we delivered 88%. That's the way they get their information. 89% say that's the way they want. So it's pretty, pretty consistently aligned there. And then the school newsletter, those two were the top two in both of those areas. So what is our plan for the future? Our next steps are to share and review the survey results with building and district leadership teams, specify family engagement strategies in all school improvement plans, continue to work on our facility use policy, and communicate to families the actions we will be taking in response to the family climate survey.
Thank you very much. We're very lucky to have Michelle. She's just very good. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I'm, I'm just wondering, with the family climate survey, when, is that an every-other-year one?
It's an every-year survey. This year, it ran from February 19th to May 8th, which was a longer window, but we were working around all those family, teacher conference times.
So if we would like, if the board is working on a particular issue and would like something incorporated in that, when's kind of the deadline?
Yeah, we, usually about December.
December.
Yeah, we start having the conversations around building that survey.
Perfect. Any other questions or comments?
I just have one, Michelle. Every year, you know, we get the facility usage piece, and I know everybody works really hard on that. Do you think, do you think it's a, I don't know how it could be like, can, they just don't know?
You know, I think, you know, if you look at more of the details of it, some it's, you know, they, they're responding to the process of it, they're responding to the, the cost, they're responding, I mean, there's a lot of different things. And it may be we are not communicating our process well.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's another issue, and this is what I talked about last, when I gave my update on the goals, and that is that there are increased expectations and diminishing resources. And we have a limited number of space, a limited amount of space, and we have so many requests to use that space, and not everybody can get in. And that, I think, creates, you know, creates demand. And it creates that feeling that we can't get in. And so that's why we've done things like open the libraries this summer, you know, try to have more of the facilities open in the summer. What we often hear is that the facility use is taken up by organizations and teams, and there's not a lot of time for family time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boob?
What is the district desire percentage of respond?
We, our response rate was 20% this year.
What is your desire to get?
Our desire is 20%. And they, they say that that is a good census survey response rate.
So 10 people, two people reply is enough? 10 people, 10 survey went out to 10 people, and then two people reply?
Yes.
That's enough?
That's what, that's what they say in the census survey world, is when you get a 20% response rate, that is good. And we have hovered around that every year. I mean, we've gone everywhere from 19% to 23%. Our highest has been 23%. And we, we have, we hit them pretty hard. I mean, we go with, we sent out seven email reminders, we had the kiosks, we have SEAs calling families so that we can get responses if they're not, you know, to meet the needs that way. And so we've tried many different avenues to increase that, and it's still, it consistently hovers around that 20%.
Thank you. The other question I have is, in what way are we able to put a finger on how satisfied are we responding to the action, the respond point that you mentioned earlier? Like, last year, a family identified this issue, and then you said those are things that we are doing things to address that. In other words, what are the progress we are making in terms of the families asking?
So, if I'm understanding you correctly, so when we analyze this data, and we take it down to, you know, a, a, a level where we can look at the questions, what are the response rates? So like, if I look at academic support, what are all the questions within academic support, which, what are the responses the lowest in? And then we start analyzing that, and start looking at strategies that we can help our families, you know, respond to that. So it may look different, you know, when you look at it as a district as a whole, you may get a totally different answer than if I look at one school. And so those schools really look at what would be family engagement for my school. So I'm going to give you an example of Locust Lane this year. What Locust Lane did is, they responded for like, family reading, that, or for students reading in the summer, that was non-existent. So how did they reach out to those families to provide that academic support, and they don't have the summer slide? So they actually took the books to the park that was in this neighborhood to have those families come to that neighborhood. So we're trying to identify the needs of the school based, rather than, sometimes it's full districts, sometimes we can get down to what are we doing as a, you know, as, at a school level. Did that help answer that question?
It's difficult, like you said.
Yeah. But I mean, we're, we're looking at this, this data, just to, you know, look at. Family engagement, you know, what we're really trying to do with even our, our MLSS and our school improvement plans, is trying to take it from, away from parent involvement. That's one of the things, which is just parents showing up to an activity, but we want them to be engaged. And how does that change how they interact with their child? How do they become, put a conscious effort, you know, with the, the teacher into making the best environment for that student? Is that out?
Maybe you two need to go get lunch or something. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments tonight about the family climate survey? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Dave Oldenberg, we're ready for you now. He was too busy being a local celebrity earlier. Oh, was there any community comment regarding the family climate survey? Okay. Take it away, Mr. Oldenberg.
I did submit to the pictures, but I said no autographs, so just wanted the record to reflect that. So I exited out of the PowerPoint, so Patty's here to save me. So as she puts this together, I want to, it's a pleasure tonight to be able to update the board on the Every Student Succeeds Act. Recall, we talked in early June about the Every Student Succeeds Act. And if you remember at that time, we talked about a, a wide-ranging flavor of administrators, a potpourri, I believe is the term that Jim used, of administrators that helped contribute to this report, to give you an update on, on ESSA. So ESSA starts in 1965. This was from the Johnson administration. There we go. Sorry. All the way back to 1965. And at that time, we talked about the Elementary and Secondary Education Act. Then in 2001 passed, and then enacted in 2002, known as the No Child Left Behind Act. And now in 2015, we had an updated version called ESSA. What these programs, but the original legislation that carries through today, all have in common is it's federal dollars that are assigned to foster student achievement, academic achievement in public and non-private schools, that students and schools have an academic commitment to advance the achievement of all students under their care, within their walls, so to speak, in return for the, for the federal dollars. And then, most importantly, the reporting piece that comes with the, with the finances that the federal government supplies. So we are moving into the 54th year of ESSA, of ESSA legislation. So what is ESSA? It gives states control regarding how students may account for, how they may account for student achievement, with some caveats. So the federal government does ask that ESSA dollars target students in poverty, students of color, students who receive special education, and students with limited language skills. Typically, these students in these categories typically do not excel at the rate of the aggregate in a public school. So what is ESSA? ESSA breaks down into four categories. Four, these are federally funded dollars, right? Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV. So distant overview, 50,000-foot view, so to speak. Title I, Title I Part A, anyway, provides for basic programming, doing some local and immediate triage of some issues that a student may bring to the, bring to school. For example, dollars in Title I Part A are dedicated towards homeless students, supporting, pushing the right resources in the building to support students that are, been identified as homeless. Title I Part D talks about prevention and intervention programs for children and youth that are neglected, delinquent, or at risk, right? That there's some type of dislocation in the community home or family, where the student, where the school may intervene on behalf of the students. And that, those dollars there are dedicated towards that population. Title II, as we talked about before, is to prepare training and do recruiting of high-quality staff, administration, or other school leaders. So you have professional development, and then you have recruitment, and then development of staff, once you bring them on board. Recently, we talked about the mentorship program here in Eau Claire. That would be an example of Title II dollars. Title III, language instruction for English-language learners and immigrant students, students that come to us with maybe English not being their first language. And then Title IV dollars, Title IV, Title IV federal dollars is dedicated towards what's called well-rounded student and student education or achievement. So you've got a bit of a catch-all in Title IV, is, in effect, where some of the federal language talks about, Title IV Part A. So as we move on here, ESSA, what we must do, what our commitments to ESSA are. We have to have challenging academic standards. So each state is allowed to, with federal guidance, guidance, construct what that might look like. In Wisconsin, one example we have is the school report cards. That's where it comes from. So school report cards that you see every fall are originated from the ESSA legislation. Assessing student performance in English Language Arts, ELA, 3rd through 8th grade, and then at least once in a high school. Math, the same thing, so you have an annual assessment, 3rd through 8th grade, and at least once in a student's high school experience. Science, academic progress in the area of science, has to be measured once at the elementary, middle, and high school level. Schools must gather information and report publicly on the disaggregated student performance by subgroups, and we talked about what the subgroups are. There must be focused support for students who are English learners, Title III, for example, migratory students, families, families that are identified as homeless, students identified at, at-risk, students that are delinquent and/or neglected. So all that is informed by Title III work. And then you look at distribution of teachers in front of student population. That's the high-quality staff, the right staff being in front of the right students. And there's a reporting aspect that comes from that, licensure typically is how you address that. And then this is something new, that schools are being asked to report at the school level, financial data, so that the dollars are assigned to students in buildings in an equitable manner. And Ms. Marx and the executive team has worked quite a bit on that this year. One of the things that you see may be reflected is in staffing. So staffing is closest to the students. That dollars follow the students through the allocation of what ESSA may ask. All right, Title I Part A, improving basic programming. All right, so some examples here in Eau Claire that we're implementing or in the process of implementing to react to the ESSA requirements. Title I Part A, as we talked about, a greater focus on family engagement, as Ms. Radkin talked about. Districts have an expectation to do not only outreach, but to include families in the programming, the planning, the, the business of school. So having a parent-teacher conference is great. If families, for example, don't attend, then what is the school's outreach plan? So the school has the obligation to include families, right? And of all shapes and sizes, so a cross-cutting variety of families. So the family involvement in your school is representative of the population of students that occupy your school. Continuing efforts to support struggling learners in English Language Arts and Math, right? We know that ELA and Math are transformational skills, right? You have skills and abilities that you gather in ELA and Math that are transferable, that you can apply. you can apply across the learning spectrum, all right? So Title I Part A requires that we continue to monitor, react to, and then report the progress of all students in ELA and in math, especially students that typically underperform. And then increased, increased attention to the academic progress of our homeless students. And that's Danny Klassik's area, and we report on that to the board on a regular basis. Title I Part D, prevention and intervention programs. So we're talking about students here that are neglected, delinquent, or at risk. So collaborative efforts between the home, the school, and different partnerships that the district may contract with or, or find community support, for example, sorry, the Northwest Juvenile Detention Center and the Eau Claire Academy. So our students, while may be placed short interim or long-term in, in one of these facilities, still are students of the Eau Claire Area School District, and we have an academic responsibility for their, their achievement. Transition supports for students with disabilities. Here, an example that we can refer to is some of the work that Tim Burns has done in the special ed area with, the term, I'm not thinking of the term. Thank you, Project Search. I could see, I was thinking SMART, I was thinking goals, I was thinking Project SMART. I knew that was not right. It's not SMART goal, Project Search. So that's an example. Thank you for the lifeline. And then ensuring that students in these programs have academic and career opportunities available for all students. An example, some of the work that we've done in the academic academies with CBTC to make sure that more indifferent students, including students that are in placements maybe outside their traditional high school, also occupy that post-secondary opportunity through youth apprenticeships and through the academic academies. And Title II, preparing, preparing, training, and recruiting high-quality teachers and school leaders. So we incorporate training into the revised school improvement plans. So, um, the executive team and then the directors have worked on revising the school improvement plans to be reflective of the different trainings and the staff development, and then tying that to, and monitoring of student achievement. So you can see that the dollars that are dedicated to training follow programming for students and then reporting on the student's academic success. Increased training for English Language Arts and Mathematics. One of the examples that we can point to is the literacy within supporting learning environment work. We're moving into year three now in that work, targeting students' specific skills in writing and then reading, again, as we talked about, a transformational skill. Continuing collaboration between human resources and teaching and learning. We talked about the ESSO requirement of purposeful staffing, giving the right staff allocated to each building, and then the right people, the high-quality staff in front of the right students. The correct allocation of the talent of the adult with the need of the student. Title III, again, we talked about language instruction for ELA, for English, for English learners and immigrant students. Current ECASD bilingual and ESL programs that we have, we have transitional bilingual, we have structured English immersion, we have content-based instruction, and we have sheltered English instruction. So a student comes to us, we have a screener that will determine what their academic ability is, both in English and in their, their native language, their first language at home. And then we, we build programming for that. Student may be academically at or above benchmark in their first language and need development of English. So you build programming for that. You may have a student that comes to us that does have some academic wonderment or concern in their native language and their first language, so then we build the appropriate programming for that. That's what this programming talks about. And there's both inclusionary practices, we know our best practices. On occasion, there's a need to do pull-out, and that is perfectly fine, with the understanding that there, the, the expectation is to get the student back in classrooms amongst their peers as quickly and with as much support as possible, because we know one of the most equitable practices that you can have to ensure student achievement for all students is to have all students have access to the universal program. And then Title IV Part A, this is where the, the federal government talks about dollars that are allocated to states and then to schools to support well-rounded education, safe and healthy students, the Safe and Healthy Student Grant can be an iteration of this, and then technology to improve academic achievement and digital literacy is what you'll find in Title IV. An interesting, Title IV is the one area of these four allocations that increased this year.
Dave, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that a, is that, so as far as the, the grants or the, the money that you just went through, I can look through the budget. I, I noticed there were increases in title, in that PD, so Title II, but the others are less. Have they been less every year? You just made the comment that it's less.
Title IV did increase for this biennium from the federal government. Title II had a small decrease. Title III, I don't recall, I think Title III was static, but I don't recall that one. Title III is the smallest of the four allocations. And then Title I had a small decrease, I believe.
So, so I just, I'm just saying this so people have the big picture is, if, if the grant goes down and we have to still do the same work, or we have increases in those areas that require us to do this work, then that money comes out of our general fund, correct?
It could, right, it could, right.
And I, I just want people to understand that there's a, there's a give and take there, that we are required and mandated to run some of these programs, but we, again, then, depending on the grants that come in, they fluctuate. And so we, we often have to dip into the general fund in order to make ends meet, and I just need people to know that.
True, both state and both, your budget is tied greatly to what state and federal allocations are, right? And the more unpredictable that is, the more challenging your job is to, to build a budget, for sure. Some of the examples in here, just talk a little bit more about Title IV, because it is, is, has a wider berth to it. For things that the district has been able to do with Title IV funding, here's where you'll see mental health and first aid training to staff occur. There is a, a charge here for now, 1819, that 10 staff and five community members will be trained in the district to support staff as we build staff's ability to provide students' mental health support within the classroom. So things like mindfulness, for an example, different strategies to build the instructor's acumen to deal with students that come to your classroom with needs. And maybe, hopefully, many of those needs can be dealt with at least academically in the classroom, again, to keep the student in front of the teacher so they have access to that universal programming. That's the idea. We want to keep the students in the classroom. Different, another opportunity here through Title IV, the district received a grant partially informed by Title IV to partner with the Marshall Clinic and Security Health to build out that mental health program that we talked about. Okay, so that's Title IV. That's an overview of that. So next steps with ESSO. So the next steps that we will engage in as a district is implementing our new school improvement plans, the work of the multi-level systems of support committee, and you, and the progress of moving all district schools to be, to have access to Title I funds is underway. At one time, we had districts that were, or districts, sorry, schools that did have a portion of Title I funding streamed to them, some of the buildings did not. We're in the process of making sure that all, all buildings can access Title I funds. So students that may be in a, in a school that previously didn't have Title I funding, but the student would benefit from Title I funding, that process is changing, or is changing. So all students would have access to those dollars that, again, Title I through ESSO would inform us that would be best practice to support that student. All right, and policy changes that we'll, we'll need to undergo here in the upcoming school year is make revisions to policy 811.1, which is the parent participation in schools policy. We talked about that a bit. So the culture of that changes, so the, the outreach is the responsibility of the building and the district. And then, interestingly enough, and add-on to here, that the district needs to construct policy to inform staff that text messaging and emailing while driving district vehicles is prohibited. So, and that is expressly written in the new ESO language. So we will work with staff, informing them while you're driving district vehicles, we hope when they're not driving district vehicles as well, that you may now want to text or email while you're driving. And that's part of an executive order that was tied to the funding, so. Go through that. All right, so questions, things that I can help you with in the ESSO. And Project Search, not Project SMART, sorry, I'm stuck there. Good to see SMART in my head. So we will continue to inform the board on how we progress through the updated school improvement plans and the work of the MLSS committee. Again, all that work and the social emotional learning committee, all that is informed to make sure the district is not only compliant with ESSO, but more importantly assures the student achievement for all of our students. That's the spirit behind ESSO, and that's the work that we're engaged in. Happy to report back on our progress.
Commissioner Torres.
Thank you. I have two questions, or perhaps it's just one question in two parts. In the, the slide that says, ESSO, what we must do. The fourth bullet says disaggregate student performance data by subgroup, right? That one? And then the final bullet there says, report school-level financial data. So, um, you say there what we must do, but how, my question is how you're going to do that? Is that disaggregation of data needing to show growth?
So, much of this work is done through the current school report cards. What you will see new with the, with the school report cards is a financial piece of this, that school report, school-level financial data laws will be part of that. Our board, the board you serve on, Dr. Torres, you frequently ask for more disaggregation than what the school report cards ask for, which is great. That's what that work is.
Yeah.
And then growth, absolutely, the expectation is for us to be able to grow all schools.
That is to the second part of the question, then, the report school-level financial data. That means that, that disaggregation will be per school, right?
Per student, I believe, is the language. Ms. Johnson, is that correct?
I. Per building? Per building, yep. And I think that what they'll do is they'll take the total per building and divide it by the number of students in that building.
Okay. So if we connect the, these two bullets, is there any plan to make sure that more resources are applied where they are needed by building?
So I, I believe yes would be the right answer to that. And we've, we've engaged in some of that work now, right? So we, we try to move district resources towards where there's a need, where what ESSO is going to do, and I, and I think that we've done some of this work in Eau Claire, I think we're maybe a half step ahead, what ESSO is asking us to do, is to identify both, not only the progress of students in subcategories and their growth, but then how we're reacting to it. The board has asked on several occasions, so then what is our plan? And what the MLSS committee, the SEL committee, and then this group helps us do is inform budgetary decisions through that plan to impact student achievement, so that the dollars are closest to the student. We can show that with transparency. And then what is the plan, working through the school improvement plan and the district's SPI plan, to move student achievement along all students? And then you talked about growth is an interesting one, too. So if you've got a subcategory that currently is below whatever the aggregate of the building is, so growth means not only to keep up with the all-students achievement, but then to close that gap, and that's part of the charge as well. Again, easy for us to talk about the devil's details of how you do that, and you do that with strategic planning that Dr. Hardbeck and the executive team leads through the school improvement plan with the principal and their leadership team, because they're closest to the students.
Yes.
And that's, and the art of that isn't the conversation, it's in the work.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Humblefield.
I, thank you. I, I just have a question, and it, does ESSO mention at all about, you know, where it talks about students who receive special education, then you talk about equity between buildings, or how they're going to look at budgets between buildings? But we serve special ed kids itinerantly, out in a lot of different sites, three-year-olds in the home. Do they talk about that at all in ESSO, as far as what that looks like?
ESSO doesn't as much with that group of students, even though you have your obligations to serve them, but there we know that the IP's are going to determine that, right? To, to build the softest landing for that student as they move into the pre-K platform, that's that work. And I'm not an expert in that area.
Yeah. I'm just hoping that there's equity there for providing that service for the three- and four-year-olds if it's in the home.
For sure. I know that ESSO speaks to pre-K programming, I don't know about three-year-olds.
Commissioner Vu.
You present the last report and now this report. How is ESSO?
I can do another one, too, if you'd like.
How is the most recent presentation fits in with the ESSO? Bilingual immersion.
Sure, good question. So what we would hope is that, of course, all district programs give access to students in high, both high-quality programming, opportunity to achieve, and then something that fits their aptitude and interest, and what the family may determine. So our charge would be to create in that dual immersion program, an opportunity for all students not only to access, but then be successful, if it's a choice that the families choose to engage in that dual immersion program. So it could be that you have a family, let's say that dual immersion isn't their thing, but they want to access Project Lead-Away program at the middle school or the high school. Again, the charge remains the same, so the student, regardless of what their, what their socioeconomic background is, regardless of, of what, of what family they come from, that we move the right resources in place to have, to help the student optimize their success, whatever that might look like. Dual immersion would just be another program like that. Advanced placement at the high school, there's some gateway programming at the middle level, access to false science at the elementary level, you know, whatever program you want to talk about. Dual immersion would just be another one of that. Dual immersion's interesting because it's cross-cutting, where, where students from across the district would access a specific plant or a place or a location, rather than the program being pushed out to all the elementaries. But the charge remains the same, and you're right, Commissioner Vu, that's a good point, that all students should have access, if they choose, at least to the lottery, then the students that are selected would be supported, not only in the academic approach, pursuit, but the social, emotional part around that. And then we address whatever their needs are, we do a needs-based assessment, and then what resources need to be pushed towards that student so they can be successful. Okay, answering your question?
Yes. Okay, I don't see anything, any other questions, comments from board members? Does anyone in the public have a question or comment? Okay, this is a lot of work, so thank you to everyone who's been diligently looking at this. And every, and, and as far as the policy and governance piece, we can put that on the agenda as soon as you'd like to come work on that.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to report on this, thank you.
Thanks. That brings us to our final agenda item for the night, which is a discussion and possible first reading of a new policy regarding social media. So we have here, we discussed it this morning as a policy and governance committee. There was suggested language that was sent from our legal counsel. Up on the screen right now, you see that draft with some modifications. So, uh, the, the policy up on the screen, perhaps we could just go section by section and go through it, and if board members have questions or comments, the, the draft that's in board docs is a little bit different than this newer draft. So the one on the screen is the one to look, look at. So if you want to go to the top, is that the top? I think that there's, I think that there's this thing, that's fine. Okay, so I'll, I'll just start, and if anyone has anything to add, let, you know, so, well, social. So, uh, social media policy for district-supported sites. The Oakley Area School District understands the value of social media and the benefits offered by digital communication devices for disseminating important and time-sensitive information and providing a forum for students, their families, and the public to interact. This policy is intended to inform all those visiting AECASD-supported social media page or site, i.e. users, as to what they post on a district-sponsored social media platform. Does that section look, okay, all right. Existing policies, all existing policies and behavior guidelines that cover conduct on school premises and at school-sponsored activities similarly apply to the online environment in those same venues. That, that clause includes our public forum policy, or any other policies like it. Use of harassing, discriminatory, or other inappropriate language. Use of ethnic slurs, obscenity, profanity, or engagement in any conduct that would not be acceptable in Oakley School District's community is not permitted. Comments that ridicule, exploit, or demean persons on the basis of their age, color, creed, handicap, national origin, race, religion, immigration status, sex or sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, or any other legally recognized protected basis under federal, state, or local laws, regulations, or ordinances are strictly prohibited. Threats of violence. Threats of violence are similar, uh, or similar inappropriate or unlawful conduct shall not be tolerated and may, where appropriate, subject the user to disciplinary or legal action. Proprietary trademark or copyright information. Confidential or proprietary information about the ECASD, its students, its faculty, its administration, or its alumni is not permitted. Users are requested to use good ethical judgment and follow district policies and state and federal requirements, such as the Health Insurance, Portability, and Accountability Act, HIPAA, of nineteen ninety-six, and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, FIRPA. Promotional materials or spam. The district strictly prohibit, forbids the use of district-sponsored sites or pages for unsolicited commercial or spam campaigns. Links to third-party sites may also be removed. Acceptable comments. The district shall create content on its social media sites. When replies or comments to district-created content are allowed, the comments must be responsive to the subject matter of the original post. The district reserves the right to remove comments that are off-topic, out of context, or overly long. Privacy of users. All those posting comments on a district-sponsored social media site shall respect the privacy of others. No personally identifying information, such as telephone number, home address, email address, social security, or other identifying number or another, of another individual may be posted. Users must always obtain permission before posting pictures, video, or audio of any other person. Be aware that parent permission is required before posting material that includes any student under the age of eighteen. Protection of personal information. Users shall be advised to not share personally identifying information, such as their telephone number, home address, email address, account numbers, or social security numbers. Improper use of someone else's identity. Any user who assumes the identity of another individual in order to post content shall have their post removed, and their access to the social media page or site may be rescinded. And then liability. Users shall be fully responsible for their posts made on a district-sponsored site. Users may be held liable for comments deemed to be copyright infringement, defamatory, proprietary, libelous, or obscene, as defined by the courts. Users are also responsible for complying with the existing rules of social media websites. And the last section didn't have to be there because the above really covers the, what is acceptable and what is not acceptable on these forums. So, um, are there any questions, revisions, updates to this draft on the screen before you?
I, I just have a couple. And I don't, up where you make the list, like what we would have the list in our discrimination policy, um, and, and it says basis as opposed to class. I know it means the same thing, but it, I think we use the word class in our discrimination policy, but...
Just the line right from the, or any other legally...
Yeah. Legally recognized, protected basis under federal, state. We use, didn't we use class in our discrimination policy?
Class is the one that we use in four eleven.
I'm only saying if you want them to kind of sound the same, but I, doesn't matter to me.
Sure. Does anyone ha, opposed to changing it from basis to class, the, the, right there? Yeah, where the cursor is? Okay.
And then the other one was in that list, um, threats of violence. If you go down, there's a list. Uh, keep going. I'm s, right there. Overly long. So it would be off-topic, out of context, or overly long. Should there be something in there about being accusatory? Or is that covered under, I mean, it is kind of talked down below.
I would assume by, by saying libelous, that would...
Yeah. Because that is in there. Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Does anyone else have any, uh, Commissioner Klinkhammer?
Yes. Um, just a thought for, uh, future drafts of this is, is some of these, uh, paragraphs have, have language that just says, these things are prohibited. And then other paragraphs have language that says, your post will be removed. So I'm wondering if maybe there isn't, um, just, uh, like a paragraph that says, the district reserves the right, based on violation of any of the things here, to remove posts, just so it's clear that if you violate this, this is the action that will be taken. Because you wouldn't want to have someone who said, well, you know, yeah, it's prohibited, but then you took my post down, so I didn't know that was going to happen. So I think there needs to be a very general statement about the consequences of violating any, any of this, just so you're wrapped up.
Yep. I agree. Can we look at this policy and see where those areas are? And if we can consolidate as you're suggesting? I'm, um, I think that's...
So like the, the use of harassing discriminatory, I'm looking at mine because I can't see that very well, but the...
Ken, uh, do you have the most updated draft?
I do not.
Oh, no.
But if you look at that one, it, that one just says, use of harassing discriminatory. At the end of it, it just says it's strictly prohibited. So you would assume that means that takes it down, but maybe some specific language that says, these posts will be removed.
I think we could put it just at the bottom of the...
I think we could have it just one general paragraph that says, any prohibited or any violation of the policy will result in your post being, or your, I don't know how you're going to have to think about that more and look at it more.
Any violation of this policy shall result in... Do we have other language in here about removing people?
No.
So it says, any user who assumes...
You, you have it under threats of violence. Subject the poster to disciplinary or legal action, but of course, that's a little strong. Sometimes it's just removing your post.
Yeah.
... identity, there it's clear, it's clear there. The post removed, and they're access to the social media website.
There it is.
Mm-hmm. So basically, each of these, a lot of these clauses have their own section about what the recourse is, and you're saying, let's just have one section that says if you violate...
Well, or you can just, I guess what my original thought was is, you can say it's prohibited, but what does that mean? I mean, you're saying, don't do it. What's the consequence to saying, don't do it?
I think it's easier just to include the consequence where it's missing.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay. So add the consequence next to where it says it's prohibited? Okay.
So you could say, or strictly prohibited and will be removed.
Okay. That part right there. Yep. And will be removed? Okay.
Does that make sense with the rest of it, comments? Yep.
Okay. Then that aligns it with the rest of the sections, I think. Okay. Commissioner Vu.
Um, removed plus whatever the violation that is penalized by the extent of the law.
Yeah. You mean like if someone, if someone posts a death threat or whatever, it's going to be more than just getting removed on the site?
Well, that's a, that's a threat of violence.
Right. So do you, the part where it says threats of violence, where it says that they may be subject to disciplinary or legal action, is that good, or do you want to add to that?
I believe that's what I was referring to.
Okay. So you're fine with it as is?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. All right. Are there any other suggestions with this draft? What we will do with this is, uh, if there's no other, uh, we can look at it one more time in the morning on the twentieth, and then we'll put it on the agenda for approval at night. So, um, if we could get Patty, if we could get this draft emailed to the board, they can look at it, and if they have anything, send it to us before the twentieth, and we can talk about it in the committee. So, okay. Anyone from the audience have a comment? Okay. Then, uh, that is it for our regular meeting. Um, next we have requests for future agenda items. Are there any requests? Oh, would we like to watch, yes, let's watch the video.
The weather is warm, the sunshine is out, and there's excitement in the air. For our families, the Oakley Area School District is the summertime destination for educational, physical, and inspiring activities.
We're just really grateful to all of our partners who have stepped up and kind of joined us in this kind of grand idea, uh, and we're seeing it grow each and each year.
Whether it's for students in elementary, middle, or high school, we have opportunities available that keep students engaged. So how does it all work?
Our partners are sponsored by the district, so they do this in partnership with us to make it happen. But the diversity of offerings that they can bring to the table for students is something that as a district, we simply cannot do on our own.
The Oakley Area School District partners with nearly two dozen organizations, including the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, and the Oakley City Parks and Recreation Department, to provide hundreds of programs for our students all over the city.
Every single child is unique and wonderful, and I love this because I get a chance to get to know all of these kids every day and to watch them grow and to watch them succeed.
We have worked very hard to remove barriers for our families. We have eliminated nearly all costs and have added transportation and free meals for our students. It all starts with engaging programming for our students. They can ride the buses, which will take them to these programs in the city, including to the Boys and Girls Club. There is always a caring adult assisting students during and between programs.
Yeah, that's the great thing about working with the Y in the school district, is kids have access to these programs. They can come in, money is no longer a barrier, so anybody can come in and be part of these programs, which is so important just to keep these kids involved.
While they're at their programming events for the day, students enjoy free nutritious meals, spend time with friends, stay active with exercise, and learn new things while forming new relationships. It's a win-win for our students and the school district.
For programs, we are required to have certified teachers managing the curriculum and teaching the students or interacting with the students. So that does give parents a sense of safety, and they're more comfortable sending kids to those types of programs.
The Oakley Area School District is your summertime destination designed to make it easy for families and students to experience quality programming in a safe and stimulating environment. In fact, the district's efforts have been recognized by a national education organization.
I think what we're looking for are things that really excite and engage students, and sometimes it's those other little experiences that they have get them deeper into our curriculum.
Join us and our community partners this summer. The Oakley Area School District, where knowledge and inspiration meet to create the future all year long.
Hmm. Nice video. That was worth the wait. That was great. Awesome.
I want to sign up.
Yeah, I want to sign, how, where do we do that? Awesome. Well, that's great. We can end on a high note. So, uh, I didn't see any other fut, requests for future agenda items? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay. Is there a second? Second. All in favor? Aye. Okay. We're adjourned.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Oakley Area School Board. Newsworks is made possible by continuing community support. If you would like to volunteer or make a donation, please contact us via phone at seven one five eight three nine five zero six seven, or online at valleymediaworks.org.